Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the April 9th meeting?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Entertained motion to approve the minutes from that meeting?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Warrants, Mrs. Geller.
I reviewed and approved warrants that were presented to me at the superintendent's office on April 5th. The total amount approved was $386,750 and 93 cents. I also reviewed and approved warrants that were presented to me at the April 9th school committee meeting. The total amount approved was $66,015 and 31 cents. I wish to enter this into the -- I wish to enter this information into public record.
Thank you. Alright, student representative?
Hello.
Hi.
The calculus and pre-calculus classes are going on a field trip this Friday to Six Flags. Also, the high school quiz show team is competing in a quiz bowl tournament this Saturday at the town hall. Lastly, the student council is putting on a mental health week next week to raise awareness about different mental health related issues.
And where's your counterpart tonight?
Um, he's in Georgia, meeting in Nashville, Georgia.
Have you heard anything about her there?
No, I haven't. I'm sure he'll talk about it like at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next item is any test field trip, Mrs. Loppe.
Alright, so I was coming before you tonight to ask permission for some of our students to go to Possocks in Connecticut, Rhode Island. So it's our students in our step out program, so our students that are finished through 12th grade, but they're with us from 18 to 22. And they do life skills and vocational skills. And one of the things that they want to do at the end of the year is to go to a Possocks game, that's a group of team building, but also, you know, social skills and life skills involved with that. And because it's out of state, I'm seeking your permission to do so.
Any questions, comments?
It's a great place for baseball. I do have one comment or question that I know Joe, you're on the government. Why are you still voting on these?
Because we haven't changed the policy.
Thank you.
It's coming.
It's coming.
It's coming.
I know, I ask it every time.
And we don't want to --
We'll write it down next time.
That's why we're trying to get the policies done by June so we can implement them force right away.
It's section X, Y, Z. Don't bring your post-it down.
I don't need a question, Jen.
X, Y, Z. Alright, entertained motion to approve the field trip to Possocks. So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night. Alright, next item agenda, item transportation options, talk about.
Thank you. So I'd like to formally request that the school committee, oh, is this calendar? You skipped calendar.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Want to go back to the calendar?
Yeah.
Alright, so I'm gonna make it really easy for you based upon Lincoln, I just talked a little bit more specifically that you go with option one Monday, only because that guarantees this help. Let me tell you what. So everybody wants, we never want to be known as being late on our bills. It's something that I'm very proud of that we're not. If we're on the same night as the selectmen, that means the selectmen won't get that into their signature because they have to do the final signature for everything to be paid. When we stay on Monday, we can get everything to town hall on Tuesday, which is the day that everything's due. It can be based on an agenda and everything can be signed on.
Or if I stopped into the office on Mondays?
Could do that.
Or you could stop in, or a member could stop in on Mondays or even Fridays and stick to the Thursdays. So those are two options.
Yeah, I don't mind doing that. If people want a Thursday, I don't mind just stopping in at the office and signing.
I would. I prefer Monday, but it's not prepared to party.
I mean, we run a pretty good business meeting as a school committee in my office and us here, so I mean, I don't, it's not like we're here until 11 o'clock at night and then we have to worry about the rest of the week either because of work or what we do. So I mean, it is, my original thought was about collaboration more than it was the opposite. But if this causes a rink, not a big deal for me.
You know what, now that I think of it, actually, Thursday is fine. Cause I like plod through everything I'm on.
I also think too, if we do the joint meetings, it's just easier instead of having to take up another night of meetings.
Yeah, I don't know what Thursdays they're gonna fall in, so they could be on an opposite Thursday, which is still fine because then all we have to do is move a Thursday meeting instead of trying to find another day.
Right.
And it's Thursdays, you know, we can look at our calendars for our buildings and try to make sure that Thursday nights are a little bit more open so that if you folks want to attend or I want to attend, you know, a festivity or situation or presentation at the high school, sometimes on Monday nights I feel like we miss those because a lot of them are scheduled for Mondays, just because it's a good night of the week.
Well, you and the art show before the special.
Yeah.
So entertained motion to, well, actually, would you vote on our individual preferences?
Well, I'll make it easy for you. I'm recommending that the school committee consider option two Thursday nights. You can vote it up or vote it down, or need to motion the recommendations.
So moved. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic.
With the understanding that on Mondays you'll have to have a committee member come in and sign.
Right.
That's a reminder.
Yeah, and just as an FYI, if they're on the opposite week, then we're actually providing something to them a week ahead of time. So we could sign off on Thursday, have it to them on Friday.
They have a schedule.
It doesn't matter.
Okay. That's great.
We'll make it work.
Alright, so we're gonna go to the transportation options.
Alright, so on that issue, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as you know, change is always difficult. And I wanted to provide you with a scenario for you to consider that you're only granting us real good permission to work on it early in the summer, if you will, because this is an undertaking. We know what we need to do to keep what we have in terms of our transportation system, right? It's, numbers are gonna come in and everything just gets kind of redone all over again versus scenario two, which is for us to take a look at combining either K-5 and in some way and 612 in some way. So if you look at the handout that you received, you have some numbers. So based on these, on this thought process, your JCS students potentially, and I don't think it's doable, but potentially could be going at the same time as the hay pickup as an example. So you'd have K to 5 transportation. So you're looking at 596 kids having to be picked up.
Are we moving times of school?
We potentially, we potentially may have to look at that. And that would be a scenario where if we just went 6 to 12, that's the change, the change is minutes. If you go to the, if we infected the JCS, we'd probably be a year away because we'd be completely changing the JCS's time. And I don't think announcing that in May, June, and July is appropriate for families. Okay, so I'm just, I'm just trying to get us to have a understanding of that this is not a scenario where we just crunch numbers and say, oh yeah, we can do it. The scenario requires that we internally put together a working team and look at all of our stops, take a look at the impact on school start time, and do we have enough buses and can we cut buses? If you just do the high school, you're talking maybe a 15 minute shift one way or the other. In other words, the high school might be starting a little later, but I don't see this, I don't see this impact of your decision tonight in two parts. First part is giving us the go-ahead to look at this long-term, at really wanting to go to potentially K to 5 and 6 to 12, which would not be for September of this year, would be potentially for September of the following year, because it's not just crunching numbers. We have to take a look at how long these routes are gonna be. We have to take a look at the bus company and the specifics of the contract and all of that. With cutting buses, option two, just as an explanation, you folks saying, hey, just take, let's take a look at cutting some buses for next year, that's a whole different scenario that we, where we can easily start working on. We won't have definitives until the fall, and does it actually save us money? Because we're implementing a bus policy for next year that's based upon the same policy you have right now, so you'd have to change your policy, i.e. eliminate busing 7 to 12, i.e. change the mileage in K to 6. So it's, when people say, let's just cut buses, there's an implication here that's a little deeper than just, let's cut a bus. Does that make sense?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So you just mentioned changing your mileage, that's not state or federal?
So the mileage requirement from the state, I think it's a mile, two miles?
K to 6.
Uh, K to 6.
Under two miles.
Under two miles. Is that a state requirement at two miles?
Yes.
Or is that the local requirement, two miles?
State.
So we can't change that?
Okay, so I'll take it back, because I thought the state requirement, and I might be wrong, but I thought the state requirement was set at one mile. And the local could be higher than two. It's two.
Chapter 71, section 68.
That's why I stand corrected. I just learned something because I thought it was the opposite. So that's number one.
What is the hay start time and the LGN start time right now?
Hay is 8:20.
8:20? 8:20 at the hay and.
What'd you ask?
LGN?
LG, 7:45.
7:35.
So there is potential there.
What's JCS, like 10:30 or something?
9:20.
JCS is Tuesdays and Thursdays only at 9:00.
Kids can start coming at 9:05.
Yeah, so remember that, the, remember two things about any of these numbers you're being told. The idea that the school starts at 7:35 is that 7:35 means the door's open and there's another 15 minute window, if you will.
Before you're marked tardy.
Before you're marked tardy. And so we give ourselves, LGN is usually not a problem except some weather days, high school usually not a problem, hay usually not a problem, JCS is usually where we have our biggest backup. Actually, it would be here in the JCS because there are two latest starts. So if there's ever a push on a delay at any point during those bus runs, then it causes middle school and JCS time issues.
What's on that day would be more combinable with the lower number?
Well, I think, I think the issue is, is a couple of things. I think, I think we're very friendly on how much time our kids are actually spending on a bus.
What time does middle school start? Middle school, what time do they start?
They're 8:40, if I remember correctly, 8:40. And those buses sometimes, not unusual to see 8:42s and 8:43s buses coming in regardless of, no.
If not later. If not later. There's a couple buses that are daily, 10 minutes.
Yeah, but it's a tiered system, so if one tier is off, then it's domino effects, right? We try to get buses on time, and we've tried it for four years, so it's a tough task, but yeah.
Well, what we end up is, we end up with, we had a situation earlier this year and we continue to have some issues at the JCS with pickup, because if there's any delay on 123, which there is every single day, and that's the problem. The problem is we got one way in and one way out to all of our schools when it comes to the run, starting at the hay, the middle school, and, and the high school. Hay, high school, middle school, because it's 123 to get to anywhere. You know, JCS side of town, you're predominantly going to that side of town, hopping on and then off. LGN, the same thing. But when it comes to three of our buildings where you have a significant number of students being bussed, if 123, unless, if 123 is backed up at all, regardless of whatever that backup is, that, that causes a delay in our tiered system.
So right now, we're talking about, cutting busing, technically, that's not the only option. The other option we're looking at is combining the high school and the middle school and then combining potentially the Yale and the JCS and LG.
So what would happen is that when the Yale picks up, it picks up for the entire town, right?
It does now.
Correct. So what I'm suggesting is, if they're already on the LG side of town, do the numbers work to pick up the LGN kids at the same time and vice versa for the JCS, or do we have to have more buses?
So just looking at the timing, doesn't it make more sense to have the Yale and the middle school combined?
Potentially. The issue that you end up with there is now you're going four through eight. So are we willing to have that discussion? There's two parts, so there's two parts of this discussion, right? The first part is, what can we do to try to reroute some buses for next year to save some money? Question number one. We would like to have that very clear with you what that means. That means we're gonna specifically look at our routes for our current schools as they are, and we're gonna tweak them to the point of we may have some students spending a little bit more time on buses in order to say, I'm sorry, a bus with 21 kids is not going out anymore, that bus is gonna be full with 45, and it now takes 45 minutes to get home, not 22 minutes to get home. Right? Cause the phone calls will come in to both you and me and Ron, Link's office about how come it takes so long. So that's one part of this equation. The second part of this equation is more of a long-term, which is that if we're gonna change our tiered system in any way, shape, or form going forward, we have a contract that's coming to an end.
This year, this year three.
So this is an opportunity, this is an opportunity for us to, this summer, begin the process of looking at what do we want our busing, busing to look like going forward, which we have to make a determination by the spring, which has an impact on school's start times potentially as well. It's a two-part scenario that I'm asking you to look at. One is, you know, you could take a bold cut and say, we're cutting 7 to 12 buses, period. So if I'm an eighth grade parent, or Denez is an example, you have an eighth grader and a sixth grader, your sixth grader's getting on the bus, but your eighth grader doesn't get transportation. So that's one. Another scenario you could look at is, so that would eliminate 712. I'm worried about, as much as that saves, I know that would save money, I'm worried about the public safety issue, because there is a public safety concern with that. The other issue that goes with this scenario is, do we, do we provide mandated bussing as per what we're using, but only fill buses with pay and ride, first come, first served? In other words, does that allow for us to say, I'm sorry, but those three students on that side of town can't pay it again on a bus because the buses are already full? Right now, we're, we're doing pay and ride. Subsystems only allow pay and ride based upon this 15 buses. Once the 15 buses are full with mandated and people who pay, there is no opportunity. Right now, we don't turn anybody away.
What's our, do we have a general idea of what our, like, per-bus cost is?
So to cut a bus?
Yeah.
Would be $59,400.
It's a clause in the contract to add or deduct a bus.
60.
$59,400.
$60,000.
Class 60.
I was shocked at the last meeting when you talked about what our payment is to the bus company. It was like just under $1 million.
Next year, it's over $1 million.
It's over $1 million.
Again, we collect about $175,000, whatever the number is, aren't these your specific numbers?
It's like 16% of the contract is covered by fees, that's it. 850,000 in the operating budget. In some of those cases though, so, cause I keep, I keep looking at the middle school and the Yale. It's the two largest numbers of buses. It's two schools that are only 20 minutes apart in start time, and so I'm assuming end time as well.
So also, the middle school is where our buses, except on early release days, are pretty packed.
The middle school.
The middle school comes in at 25 per bus, that's the average, and the Yale's 23. The middle school's not even highest, the LG's 27.
Yeah, we can give you, we've actually been doing bus counts, like, at the beginning of the year is our best bus counts, because numbers always switch throughout the year. But the first month of school, about two to three weeks in, Link's office asks the principals to do bus counts. And we do AM pickup for a week, and then AM afternoon pickup for a week, and we take a look at the numbers. Some of the numbers at the hay are as low as 11, 13 kids on a bus. And so this is what I mean about scenarios that allow for us to.
What's, how many kids on a bus? 42.
42.
42.
So that leaves LGN with four buses, not six.
Yeah, so the question here becomes that, as I said earlier, the argument back is going to be, and I know this from, from, and I, I'm not saying this, I know it's on camera, I'm not saying this to be negative to the bus company, the routes are very long, it's a lot of square mile, mileage to cover. My scenario is, okay, okay, that's true, right? But if I have 21 kids out of 40 seats, out of 42 seats, or 50% of the bus full, where are the other 50 seats going? Where are the other, excuse me, 50% of the seats going? And I'd like, I'd like to say.
But you can't send half a bus.
Right, and so what I'd like to say is.
But with that, you're covering more square miles, so that kid's gonna be on the bus 50 minutes instead of 25 or 30, and that's when the calls get flooding in. So, I understand that, and that's great, but it is what it is.
Yeah, no.
The call's coming in, the call's coming in.
Can we hit, can we hit it as what it is as a recording?
It is what it is, right? So, so this is kind of circling back though, because again, they're both whole-town buses, which is equal school.
Yeah, we can look at that scenario as well. We're not, the issue here is two parts. The, the, because you're in a tiered system, that doesn't necessarily mean that all the buses show up at the same place at the same time to start a drop-off or a pickup. You take a look at our drop-offs, there could be 15 minutes between the buses actually all coming through.
Well, I mean, people want Swiss, you know, Swiss watch precision, they're not gonna get it.
Right.
Hit the button, it is what it is.
So looking at, looking at five to eight transportation is absolutely another option.
Four to eight.
Excuse me, four to eight is another option to look at. But what I'm suggesting to you is that.
Is that something we can do quicker? Because the reality of the situation right now is we're looking at this because we're fairly dire.
Yeah, if you're looking at a short-term solution, the options would be to bring that on as an option, to see if we can do it in terms of the numbers. And, or, option one, which is my original thought, which is to say, where, it is what it is, it's gonna become a common theme, so everybody needs to be on the same page. We're gonna put together some runs where kids are gonna be spending more time on the bus in order to cut some busing back.
But it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be drastically, right? Because if you, if you think of this, the town as like a spider web, so this bus is going this road and coming back here. Right now, there's one going this way picking up kids for Yale, and there's one going up here doing this and picking up kids at middle school. It's just a matter of, at each stop, it's picking up three kids now, picking up five kids or six kids. So, and honestly, we can't, we can't cut all the buses from one side or the other because we're gonna probably still need a couple of additional buses just for, for spacing. But it seems to me that, and if we can cut even 10 of those buses, and I don't know if there's, if we're using those same buses for our school and we actually are gonna get the full savings here or not, but just back the napkin, that's $6,000.
I think you're, well, that's one, and two, I think your big shift in all of this is if 500 students left tomorrow, your, your whole busing situation would absolutely shift, just because of, predominantly those would be age-bearing students who want to take the bus at the elementary level. That's not what our numbers show for any type of decrease over the next 10 years in the district. So this scenario is either to tie in, and I, to be quite honest, I didn't go with the four to eight, because I didn't think there'd be any love from the committee on the four to eight, but if there is, I'm happy, we're happy to look at it. Grades four to eight.
What's the, is there hesitation, and is the hesitation the age gap?
I think it's a big difference, fourth graders and eighth graders, you know, things that are discussed on the bus, but listen, my kids went to.
I don't have to get same.
They went to the bus elementary level no more.
So my biggest issue is that if you take a look at issues in K to 5, you usually don't see any issues. Four to eight, middle school concept, even though we have great kids here in Norton, and I have very little issues that come to my office in terms of discipline, the fact of the matter is the topics that are discussed between sixth and eighth graders versus fourth and fifth graders, I think is a huge difference. Because they're just a mouthier, they're, they're got more things going on with their physical body and, you know, use of technology. I have less of a issue with K to 5 kids with their technology on a bus than I am with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders with technology on a bus. That's my hesitation.
We're currently, I'm using the word segregating, but it's, I don't mean in a bad context. It probably serves me kindergarten kids are all in the front of the bus, during the first two rows, whatever it is, and then they stack them back. There's no reason we couldn't do that in four to eight buses too. If they're in the front half.
Receiving charge is tough for bus drivers, you know? They said that at the beginning of the year, they try to implement it throughout the year and try to run all over the place. They know the need. At the, at the end of the day, it's the topics of discussion and things like technology that will become the issue, because that's what my peers deal with, right? And, and we do see an uptick in technology misuse, like individual kids starting right in that middle school grades. It is what it is, it's part of who they are, not all kids, very few, but the fact is, it only takes one of those awful situations for it to blow up. And that's, that's my caution with that.
Yeah, my issue is we're looking at, we're not going to.
I think we have to look at this, to be honest, they really.
If you look at, if you go through this, the riders and the buses, I mean, if you build them all, and yes, it means longer bus rides, but you're looking at 33 buses as opposed to the 30.
There's 33 rods, it's only 15 rods.
As opposed to 55 buses.
It's not 15.
They go again.
So that's my allegation, when we're looking at the 60,000 number.
If we look at 10 more than that, that's still a lot of buses.
Can we cut buses in six hours?
So we. Yeah, we save somebody on a run.
Yeah, you get rid of a tier. So it goes, a bus, for instance, goes LGN to Yale to middle school to JCS. So if you combine those, the middle, it's a three tier instead of four tier. So you save money that way, you don't necessarily get rid of a bus, you get rid of a run. So we can run those scenarios if you want, combining those. So instead of four-tiered bus runs, we have, we have three tiers. Well, cause, cause, I'm only hovering on this because it looks easy to me, but Yale and middle school seems like something we can do relatively quickly.
We will, we'll run, we'll run numbers and take a look at it.
My only concern is the bus coming from, dropping off at LG, and then they have to pick up Yale and middle school kids and get there by, what, 8:15 after dropping off at the Yale, or dropping off at the LG. If you have to pick up Yale and.
But this, right, so it's, it's still the same area. I mean, they're only traveling a mile from one school to the middle school. How much more long? In other words, if they're already out in that part of town, just hold on a second, if they're already out on that side of town, they've just dropped off the LG, which means all they're doing is going back and picking middle school kids up and Yale school kids from that same side of town.
You're saying it's gonna take longer?
It could take longer.
In theory, in theory, it's 20 minutes extra in the morning for the Yale kids and, sorry, for the middle school kids, and 20 minutes more in the afternoon for the Yale kids. 20 minutes. Yeah, no. Sorry, it is what it is. Hit the button.
I think we need to do that for next year, if we can save some.
We want to look at all the scenarios that provide the best information for, A, safety and, and saving money. I mean, it is what it is.
But the majority of this though, won't happen until a full year from now, right?
Well, we do something, well, the, the, the cutting a bus, let me refer back a bit.
So I just want to talk about one other aspect that we haven't had a conversation about yet. We talked about the safety aspect, we talked about the financial aspect, we haven't talked about the educational aspect. And one of the biggest challenges that we have here in Norton is the discrepancy in time between LGN and the JCS, and it's been a consistent issue for almost 15 years. If we have the opportunity to change the bus routes and get some of our buildings on a closer time, we really need to take that piece into consideration too, of getting our two lower elementary buildings on a more consistent time schedule. So if we were to look at four to eight for the upcoming school year, not we're able to, I think we maybe need to keep in the back of our mind that that may change moving forward, just to think about that educational aspect, giving our staff time to. Just to think about that educational aspect, giving our staff time to...
I think you have to say, we needed a, we need a mandate immediately, and then we need a better solution going forward, but as Dr....
I, I think we can throw that up there.
Remember that now.
So, so, so to be clear, scenario one that I thought of was crunching numbers and looking at literally making riders ride, current rides longer and potentially saving on a, a physical bus being gone, or two. So, that's scenario one. Scenario two looks at, looking at things like elimination of a tier. Scenario three looks at things like, which would be a four to eight situation, right? Now, we're housing, we're moving four to eight together. Link doesn't think that will work, but again, we can, we'll go through that process of looking at what that looks like.
I don't think it's not gonna work. I mean, we'll look at it. I just think it's gonna be, the run is gonna be longer. But we'll look at it. And, I mean, this is a big thing. We're gonna, we have to meet with the bus company. And go through them, that whole scenario with them.
What would our ballpark be on, savings for option two?
For combining?
No, that's for dropping the tier, dropping the seventh to twelve.
Well, that means that if, if you're looking at seven to twelve, then you're looking at the entire high school doesn't get a bus, so there's, there's a full tier gone. And you're looking at three eighty-seven, so I'm gonna guess, most of them are sixth and seventh graders, but let, so, so let's say if, it would be any sixth grader goes and the seventh and eighth grade no longer goes.
So, what's that happen?
I'm gonna say, what, two hundred, two hundred of those? I mean, there's only a hundred and eighty-five kids in sixth grade, let's say, so, maybe two hundred of those. I mean, you, you could potentially eliminate another, a whole nother tier, but at least another three to four buses anyways.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I did a similar where you, where you cut tiers on certain buses. I did it combining high school and middle school, but it'd be the same savings if you combined A and middle. And I, I came up with about a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar savings, cutting those tiers and combining two schools together. And it's, it'll actually cut one bus doing it that way.
I think one, one issue we're gonna have to think about as well, if we're talking about now we have four cars coming into this building for drop off and pickup, we need to seriously redo our traffic pattern here because it's already bad, even if we're offering busing to everybody now, if we're not offering it to two grades.
There are not a lot of scenarios because there's one way in and one way out, right? The only scenario that we really have contemplated is that the buses have to come and go before the parents are released, and that's not gonna go over well. That would probably mean I have to hire a police officer because we already have issues with people not doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Before then, back in the days, there were crossing guards, back then patrol the streets of the school.
So, so the issue, the issue would be with traffic down on one twenty-three? I'm failing to see how that's my problem.
No, I'm talking, in, in this parking lot, it's a disaster.
I continue to fail to see how that's my problem.
Oh, it's absolutely our issue if it's in this parking lot within, from the sidewalk back is us. We have to, that is our safety issues. Those are our issues.
I do the best I can with the funds that we have.
I get that, but I'm also not gonna put a kid's safety as an issue.
It's not a safety issue. It's people are inconvenienced by it.
If kids are wandering around trying to find their parent, that's a safety issue because we have more cars coming through.
In the winter and stuff, because kids are...
It's a safety issue.
Kids are trying to cross to get to their, their parents.
You mean seven?
I pick up at the middle school, and it is horrendous. My daughter, as well as Carol, has almost got hit twice.
So, can it work?
Last month, because the cars, I park in a spot, but the cars now double park down the center lane, and when the kids are coming out to the sidewalk, they, they creep out, but the cars come flying. It's horrendous.
It's awful, and they don't, they don't let the buses go first. There is a crossing guard that tries to let the buses go, but these parents are cutting off the buses in this parking lot every single day. Staff waits, we wait in line with the parents, we don't get out. We're waiting in this parking lot fifteen, twenty minutes, like getting out of a concert. Just the staff and parents are parking at the church, and kids are now walking across one twenty-three in traffic trying to get over there because this traffic hour is crazy already.
And the problem with the crossing guard too, when you get your, your parents are out.
The teachers are not police officers to stop people's cars and so on and so forth. And not your crossing guards.
Because she's trying to cross kids across the street because their parents are parking at the church, and people are going around cars.
The issue is that your middle, our, our middle school was built as a total bus pickup, drop-off school. Just take, take a look at our situation. I mean, this whole situation over here for the drop-off, that was all about, you know, could be a billion kids here, and you were gonna, you were gonna bus everybody as much as you could, and in fact, you didn't. Now, starting in two thousand and seven, you started to implement fees and all of that started to, you went from probably, I'm gonna guess fifty, sixty cars of that coming into this building for drop-off, and everybody else was on buses. It was free. In oh-seven, everything started to change.
So, can we not use like the, the whole around the school?
You can.
Like we do for soccer?
Yeah, you, you can, but the scenario still comes down to releasing, you need a, we have a secondary exit up here. There is a secondary, it's just not currently accessible.
Well, can we make it? They just did...
Well, one of the questions to look at is to have a discussion with the board of selectmen and say, we'd like to know a little bit, and I'll get Wade to look at more information about what the secondary exit is at the, at the, at the building. And it comes down to traffic. What people don't understand is that because you, we've implemented fees, it's created more car traffic. We need to be able to get buses out of here and, and allow traffic at the same time to leave. Right now, it's all the mumble jumble of everything. I mean, I've come to pick up Maggie a couple of different times, and I'm horrified about the drop off and the pickup.
So, why, just walking through why we're expecting a huge amount of traffic in middle school?
If you take away two grades and don't make the bus.
You have seven to eight graders.
Oh, we're talking about, we're talking about that, okay.
I, I think, I think that as much as I know that keeping teachers, staff, whoever, I always find it interesting administration is on the list, is, is more important than anything else, is great, but I don't think eliminating seven to twelve is an idea that we should really go down at this point until we can resolve some of our physical plant issues as it, as it pertains to what are the secondary exits. And a perfect example is if there's a scenario right now with the middle school, or even the high school, remember, the high school and the hay are practically dumping at the same time. If we could have that secondary exit available for busing only, if we could have a secondary exit available or a front exit available for busing only, imagine that the cars at the beginning would be going out that way, let's say the side entrance, the new side entrance, buses would go right onto one twenty-three, and now you could still allow for one twenty-three to be used by families. We would dump this building out so much quicker and safer than we currently do. We just do not have a secondary exit of any type.
So, I think that we need to ask the board of selectmen, because not only for this whole issue, but a safety issue. You look at the craziness going on in this world right now, we need to have a second exit out of this building.
I would agree.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, Mr. Campbell was, was good enough to help out for the high school, so maybe we reach out to them and see if it's something that he can do for the school, and then, you know, we can look at this further, but I think, I think for next year, I think we have to look at four to eight combined and see what that does for a fix right now. And then in the long term, like you said, look at the start times of the schools, the busing over the long run. I mean, over a million dollars for busing, I, something has to give. It just is with the buses with the sixteen kids.
I will tell you, I will tell you this in a, as someone who has spent a lifetime dealing with busing, I'm not sure that this is a sexy discussion, if you know what I mean. In other words, cut a teacher or keep a bus, I'm gonna guarantee you there's gonna be a lot of discussion about keeping a bus more than a teacher.
By who?
By parents like me and anyone else who requires, requires getting their kid on the bus in order to get to work. It's okay if they're sitting in the classroom with thirty kids. It's not a sexy issue because people don't see it.
But that shouldn't be an issue here, though, right? Because if you combine the two, no one's bus ride will be shorter, everyone's will be longer. So, in theory, you're getting on earlier and getting off later. That actually helps parents. They should be excited about this. And they should, right?
And if there's a problem, but if there's a problem, instead of taking it to Facebook, come sit in our meeting and let us hear about it.
And quite honestly, the whole idea that we're gonna have this huge uptick in people coming in, if we start cutting teachers, we don't have to worry about all the students showing up here. That would be a charter school problem. People are a state school.
The scenario that happens now is that, you know, the requests that are coming into my office now, it all has to do with people already for next year saying, my child doesn't have a sidewalk. You're not providing a bus. How can we not be providing a bus? And I said, there, there is no exclusion because of a sidewalk. You know, the, the response people don't like from me, and, and I said, listen, I'll bring it to the school committee, but the school committee's been very clear. We're not in the sidewalk business. This town hasn't had sidewalks for a million years. It's not something that's new. There's always a responsibility placed on me that I'm, I'm causing a safety issue. I'm not causing a safety issue because I don't open the front door to your home and allow your kid out to the street, you do. Okay? So, if, if you don't like the pickup or the drop-off, that's not my issue. That's a parental responsibility issue. And, and that doesn't fly very well because these types of scenarios potentially require that the drop-offs are more generalized, if you will. Now, of course, we wouldn't do that with a kindergarten student, any, any, any worse than we do now, but I'm telling you, this is, this is a topic that people don't see. And because they don't see it, it's not at the top of their list, and people just are like, okay, yeah, all right, I guess we're cutting teachers, but my, my kid's getting on a bus. And that's my, that's my worry. Because people, this is a community where a lot of people work out of town, and they need to get those kids on the bus in order to, you know, work their schedule out. Even though I agree with Dinesh, I think it's actually gonna give people the opportunity to put their kid on the bus ten minutes earlier and get them ten minutes later, or twenty minutes, whatever the scenario is.
I also think if, if parents are calling complaining about, you know, sidewalks, I would, I would make sure you give them the town hall's number.
Yeah, call them, people.
Yeah, let me call the town hall.
That's the number one complaint I get. I think I got like fifty-eight bus stop changes last year, and they're all about sidewalks. I'm like, yeah, there are no sidewalks in the entire town.
Send them over to our town manager. Yeah. That's a town issue.
Do people seriously think we put sidewalks in? I don't know.
No, they don't think we put sidewalks in. They, they know that, I, I think the feeling is that there's frustration that the sidewalks have been discussed for a long time, and they don't see any action on them. And, and that's not, you know, I don't, I don't...
It's a research now.
Goes to town.
We started that complete street sweep, and yeah, we're looking at sidewalks.
We, as an administration, we've done that in the last year and a half. We've decided that, you know, there's some mass dot stuff out there, so we've, he's on board, he's attending meetings on a regular basis that are talking about, you know, coming up with prioritizing scenarios around, I have to tell you, Keith from the highway department was very adamant and said, we need sidewalks around these schools.
The main focus around all the schools, and everyone on that group was on board. So, it's just, it's just when.
It's just, the, the issue is when is it coming? I, I do think you're gonna see more sidewalks in the future. The issue is when is it coming and, and what's the parts of town that are prioritized? You know, you have parts of town where everybody knows that within four feet from the, from the street is yours, but all you need is a couple of neighbors to say, well, that tree was, is from sixteen seventy-two, and the next thing you know, that sidewalk doesn't happen. So...
Put a new stump right around the tree.
Yeah, well, that's, I've seen that happen. So, we'll come back, we'll come back with more specific written scenarios for you to consider for the next meeting with some budget scenarios that we think would work.
I mean, I think we all agree that four to eight on a bus together isn't ideal, but if that's what we have to do for one year, and then, what would be ideal would be to get the Norse and the, and the Somalis on the same schedule, so the bus picks up from both sides of town and meets at the hay to drop everybody off. I mean, that's what's ideal, but, but we can't make those, we can't change start, I agree with, you know, we can't change start.
Don't you feel it would be more than one year, though, once a semester? Like, I have a fourth grader, and I teach eighth grade, and I would not want my fourth grader on a bus with an eighth grader, even if they were sitting in separate places. The things that are talked about, the things I hear my eighth graders talk about, I don't want my fourth grader anywhere near that. I would not bus him. I would find a way to drive him, honestly.
I, I agree. I did the same thing with my kid at JCS. I took him off the bus then.
Yeah, social, emotional wise, that would be devastating for my family to think of my fourth grader being on a bus with seventh and eighth graders. I would not like that whatsoever. You know, and, and as far as, you know, parents enjoying having their buses on, having their kids on a bus longer, I want my kid on a bus as short a time as possible. I want him home. You know what I mean? Like, so not all parents...
I think what we just have to remember, though, we don't really have an option.
I know, I know.
I mean, that's the problem. I think you can probably say that all of us sitting here are really concerned about the emotional wellness of children.
Right, but just the difference between a fourth grader and an eighth grader is huge.
But we can't keep having these same conversations. We've been having these conversations for, I have a senior this year, I've been sitting at school committee meetings for twelve years, having the same conversations, not necessarily at the table, but just sort of listening, the same ridiculousness of no money. So, enough is enough, and I actually have to say, Dinesh, my daughter leaves the middle school and her little head comes popping, you know, sort of through the cars, and I'm like...
It's scary.
But I get it. At this point, you know what? We just have to say enough. We have no money, and I'm the first one to say, I would never vote to have anybody lose their job, because I think everybody in our system's important, and if it meant getting rid of a bus, or if it meant me being more responsible for my daughter walking out of the middle school, maybe, maybe parents need to come up to the door. Walk up and get your kid if you're, I don't know what the idea is, but...
In the snowstorms and in the rain, where they can't see, to get the kid out.
I mean, I, I think we all get it. It is not ideal, and it is not perfect.
Yeah, I have a seventh grader now, she'll be an eighth grader next year. Believe me, I'm not, I don't mean to be cavalier about the middle school safety, but at the same time, Cal, like you said, there's not a ton of choice. Next year, I will have a fourth grader and an eighth grader, and I'm sure they're gonna be thrilled if they're on the same bus. I will never hear the end of it. That, there will be constant battles in my house.
I think one of the...
But again, don't have a ton of choice.
The, the scenarios here are, they're, they're not a scenario that any of us are having because we think they're necessarily good ideas, right? It's not like we're at the table talking about, what's the ideal situation for K to five busing here in Norton Public Schools?
That's all advice.
Right? But, but, but...
That's Lincoln's day.
That's not what we're doing. What we're doing is we're saying, how do we make sure that our class sizes are reasonable next year, recognizing that we have double-digit layoffs in classroom teacher positions?
Exactly. Fiscal crisis, what can we do to revert as much of this? Can't revert at all.
And, 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 don't forget, and I'm gonna continue to harp this because this is gonna hit home, you know, there were options provided last year on not to even have this discussion. That's number one. Number two, here's the worst part, this is only year one, folks, of a two-year battle we're about to have. So, this is year one of things are hurting, and what we're trying to maintain is everything that we can in the classroom, as much as we can, as as much as possible. We'll have reasonable class sizes. We will. We'll, we'll be reasonable, we're gonna, we're gonna, once again, work the magic, but what we're not gonna do is all of a sudden, July first, have all these people come back from being laid off and so on, unless the town says that we have some funds, because we won't have, we're gonna have to put the money towards the resources that we need in the classrooms that we're not gonna be budgeting for in various scenarios that I'm gonna present to you. The other part of it, I, I think is really important is, as much as I appreciate that, you know, other parents are probably gonna have the same viewpoint that Trace you have, the fact of the matter is, maybe this will finally be a calling for people to get out and, and pack these meetings and say, how dare you, Mr. Superintendent, put my kid on a bus with, with an eighth grader? I'd love to have the meeting stacked with people saying that to me. And maybe that'll kickstart everything. Come on down. I have to take Monday nights away for my family to be here in order to do my job, so come out here and fight for the same fight. Or Thursday next year. So, I, I, we're not here because of a good situation, we're here because we're trying to, these cuts started in oh-seven. I wanna remind everybody of that. We've had three decent years, we have decent years, not great years, but decent years, right, of, of the budgets, and we're at a crossroads this year because our budget's level services without specialized costs is one point four million, before special education costs. We're getting seven sixty. We're getting 760. We have a perfectly $28 million budget, nice zeros all across the board. It'll make next year's budget process even easier. You get 760 in your level services to maintain what you have is 1.4 million, and last time I figured that out, that's 50%. So you're cutting 50% somewhere else.
And that's why we just have to look at some tougher things. I mean, I think that, I don't know.
They're bad choices.
They're, they're bad choices.
But I think, you know, what your, your first comment that you made, this town had the opportunity to make a difference and not have these conversations, and the majority chose not to. So we are stuck to make these hard decisions, and we're going to have to, and then we will also take a beating on Facebook for it, which is really fun. Because I don't think people realize, we sit here, we take time away from our families, like you said, this is all volunteer for us, and then we have people bashing us on Facebook for decisions that we have to make, because people either said, "No," or "I don't care."
Well, I think, I think it's, it's a really important statement, and it's maybe beyond the scope of this line item, but when people say that the school committee and the superintendent should be embarrassed in its representative budget to the town, what does that just send a very clear message to everyone?
Yeah.
Right? Because two is five.
But never here.
But they're not here. But the other part I think that's important is, the school committee is required to put forth what it believes is an appropriate budget to teach students, to keep them safe, and so on and so on. Those are really the two things. How do we make sure that our children are safe with the right social, emotional supports and school resource officer and all that stuff? I don't think that most of our parents recognize how much counseling and support our staff provides students, right? I don't think that our parents recognize that $200,000 every year since I've been here have been coming in for Medicaid reimbursement to the town. I don't think that, as Dinesh will frown at me when I say this, that I'll make a recommendation to save positions by utilizing school choice funds that we didn't have here five years ago.
Oh, because of the school choice.
So, so the fact of the matter is, at the end, at the end of the day, we, we don't, we're, we're going to be as decent as you can be, but there's certain things that we just won't be able to move forward on. We're going to have to just, just keep the classrooms as, as good as we can, keep pushing along. Some of the creativity will slow down. It won't stop, because I won't allow it to stop, but it's going to have to slow down. And let me finish with this statement. Every year since I've been here, really one of the only places I ever worked where this comes out publicly, but that's okay, I guess it's the mindset, we need to hurt. So we're going to show some hurt. Here we go. Busing, cutting teachers, here we go. And let's see if that allows for some folks to come forward and say, "It's time to get behind the schools," because your schools are your economic engine. Biggest employer in terms of, of the public sector is us, not anyone else.
The good news is, we haven't even hit the budget yet.
That's okay, that's an easy point. So we'll come back with options, Mr. Chairman.
I'll tell you something, so, and I don't mean to digress, but for whatever number years I've been doing this, 10 years, 11 years, whatever this is, I can't remember one decision, one vote I've cast that was personally good for me. They're almost all negative to me.
Yeah, you're the second person on the school committee, one is already not here that's said that.
Yeah, they're, they're all negative to me, but I make them because unfortunately the decisions you have to make, they're not good decisions sometimes, but they're the best you can possibly make at the time. So this is one of those scenarios. It's hit the button. It is what it is. You know, we're, we're in a budget hole, the town's in a budget hole, it's not just us, and we need to find ways to save money. It's, it's save money to save teachers, that's it.
Okay, so for the next meeting, just we'll have the scenarios.
We'll have scenarios.
Yep.
Yep.
So we'll go on to the next agenda item, the FY budgets.
All right, so, so for the, for the sake of very general discussion, because I really don't want to start announcing positions and all that, because I think it's early to do so, even though I do have a lot of staff members that are getting nervous. When we look at scenarios, to get the debate discussion we'll have on school choice, you know, in terms of how that works, I'll, I'll bring scenarios that include choice, scenarios that don't include choice, because I have to. To me, that's an educational discussion that needs to take place. But I do see my biggest target in the scenarios being trying to keep elementary class sizes as under 25. That'll be the goal across the board. And then middle school, keeping our middle school philosophy, I continue to harp that that's a huge thing for us. Changing this place into a junior high is not a discussion I want to have.
What's actually the difference? Like, what is the?
Yeah, so the, the biggest philosophy is that your teachers at the junior high level are content teachers only. The idea of being, and they're in departments, they belong to, literally, they belong to departments. They don't belong as a team that's all working together with students.
So would it be like 7.7 per?
Right, so you'd have seventh, you'd have, you'd literally have a seventh grade program, and, you know, who's ever the math teacher's English teacher, they are who they are, but they're not into, they're not scheduled in a way where they could potentially have intertwining students and so on and so forth. They become much, very much like a high school schedule. It's a high school schedule. You know, and, and so you don't have students traveling together in the same sense and so on and so forth. And it's not, it's a scenario that folks started to go away from in the mid-'90s, became very popular to get out of the way, and now we have very small number of districts that still have that philosophy in Massachusetts, which are normally middle school. It's also our nem school. It's one of the 40, 40th best middle schools in the Commonwealth in terms of being recognized for what it does, and, and been our flagship in many ways when it comes to those types of initiatives. Our high school does well, and is, has a reputation for kids going to college and workplace and all that stuff. So it's, it's just a whole different scenario. So that's the second part of that. The third part of it is trying to make sure that we're not returning to the days of 30-plus teachers in, in the, at the high school level, 30-plus students, excuse me, per classes. So the high school's negative in this scenario could be some tweaking of elective courses that will have to be looked at. Also looking at, it's the only building really where part-time staff can be looked at, so it's the only building where a full-time position may have to drop down to a part-time position, for example, going from 1.0 to 1.6, so that somebody's only working three days a week, or whatever the schedule will look like. We also have unit leaders, or I should say stipend positions, like unit leaders, academic coordinators, all of those will be something that we'll seriously look at as a way to keep teachers in the classroom. And then lastly, we'll take a look at any of the other big student stipend issues that we have. Again, I'm not anticipating continuing to just raise fees, because I, I don't know if that's, I kind of feel like that's like the end result, is you, you consider raising a fee if we really have to at the end, but I, I'm not sure that any of my scenarios right now have that in play.
So where does everything stand? You mentioned earlier we're at 1.4 for level services, but our total deficit was?
Yeah, so your total, so your total deficit is 2 million, or, excuse.
And that's what we.
Let me, let me, I want to make sure that, since it's being taped, I want to make sure. The town has increased our budget by $764,389 as of April 4th, leaving us with a shortfall of the school committee's recommended budget of $2,181,994. Then what I will do, the easiest, I shouldn't even use the word easiest, off the top, the first thing that comes off is additional positions that are not related to special education and student counseling. So that saves us $322,000. So there's your technology at the high school position and all of that, that we, we're just going to have to find other ways to do that. And then offsetting revolving accounts, Link has some ideas on utilizing facilities revolving and that type of stuff to potentially save positions. And then everything to do with technology, PD, textbooks, legal, all of that literally comes off the top. I, I have to keep some of that, but I take some, what I would call conservative estimates of money that I can, I can take out. We're proposing that we believe the federal grants will actually not see the significant cut we had in the budget proposal. We now actually see that as being just a little less than that. So we're, we're saving about $100,000 to the good in federal grants. So that'll get us to about $1.1 million. From 1.1 million, we stop looking at approximately between support staff, administrators, and teachers, 13.8 positions. That leaves us with about $426,000 in shortfall.
And what was that Chapter 70 announcement that we're only, we're releasing a sliding report?
We're seeing $20 per student. Right now, that's been increased to $30 per student, which gives us $25,000 more. One of the questions for you is, do you go after that $25,000 before town meeting with the, with the FinCom in, in Mike's office? Or do you wait until town meeting? Because those are all numbers that are still knotted from the state. Or do you wait to go after that money in the fall? Because remember, the town, the state budget isn't done yet. That's just as a proposal, going through the process. Usually when the governor comes in with one budget and the state legislature comes in with a higher number, usually it's the higher number that we see. So at $426,956, I'm now working on the scenario of, A, I'm using school choice, and what does that mean? Or how many more positions, and how does that impact down the line? Further, we've already announced an RFP process for food services. I've met with the custodial union, and we've had some discussions about their contract, and we're looking at in-district transportation, of which I believe we have a tentative call this week to look to see if there's any potential savings there. I will come back with any of these scenarios with a discussion that took place at the last meeting, which is, we kind of don't feel like any money that's saved on the town side is going to be something we can go after anyway, so I'm just working off the scenario of, is there a savings to our budget? And not a, not a scenario of, how do we go get more money from the town, even though we're saving them more money, because there's no strong view that that money would even be assured to come to us at a dollar or anything. And then the last two items, or the last big item is.
Just before we move on to that point, you said we're not going after any money from the town, but if we're cutting 13.8 positions, I'm assuming that we're going to recoup that?
$18,000 per, for benefits?
That's a family plan, yeah. So we, we, once we know who the people actually are and what plan they're on, I can actually give you some good scenarios of what those numbers look like.
Because that's, that's toward $34,000.
Yeah, not everybody's on a family plan, because you're looking at, that's a best-case scenario. The least-case scenario would be whatever the individual cost is, which is.
Well, even least-case scenario.
You could save you over $100,000.
$6,600 on an individual and 17.
Right, so that's, that's over $100,000.
It should come back to us.
Right.
So. I'm not saying well.
Yeah, so then the other one that's still up for debate and discussion, which you don't have to, you're not voting on tonight, but as part of the scenarios, I, I looked at a, a discussion that came up last time, which was to look at fees, and really the only other option that I have, if people want to hurt, is we currently charge the custodial fee over time at use of our buildings, our facilities, and that is to come up with an actually hourly charge to offset the cost of utilities, water bills, and everything else, which we now really don't recoup from our groups that are using our buildings. And that would be a scenario where the high school gym could see things like a $24, $25 per hour charge on top of the custodian, library at the high school, $10 per hour, cafeteria, auditorium, $15 per hour, classroom, $7 per hour, and that would go on according to the sizes of the buildings and what buildings are used. That would be a direct cost to any of the groups, as we've discussed, one of the groups this year that already feels they're paying too much, and I understand why. So this would add further costs to that.
Are we losing money to these facilities?
Well, it's not that we're losing money. What it comes down to is the whole idea of how do you, how do you really calculate, you know, when, when something is being utilized? Our buildings are open, because we do have a custodial crew and they're cleaning it. I don't think we're losing money, but could we offset the cost of that? So if we have a $7,700 increase in utilities for next year, how do we offset $7,700? You look at charging above and beyond the custodial cost. You know, if you've, if you're spending one more roll of paper per month, how do you offset that cost? You know, this brings me back to when I first started here, where we used to charge $5 for plugging in the popcorn machine. And I was kind of like, I, I don't even know how we build this. You know, I don't even know how we come up with that scenario. But I know why it was done. I get it. I mean, I'm not trying to be negative about the prime administration. I know why the school committee and the prime administration did it. It was a way to make sure that we were trying to recoup every penny and more for things like that. The veterans used to be charged for using our buildings, right? Custodial charge, food services cost charged, because they used the cafeteria, until Chris Modest's first year here, and I continued it, which we eat that as part of, from our revolving accounts. I don't even know what the cost is. It's not anything great, but, you know, those are the discussions where, you know, if the revolving account gets eaten up, because I have to use it to offset actual manpower costs, then you have to have those lousy discussions again. You know, who are you going to give the break for? Who doesn't get the break? Why do they get the break? Those are all decisions that the school committee then needs to make. And those are not decisions that I cushioned, you might think.
The other thing with that, too, that's recouping 7, 8,000 if everyone stays. If you start jacking up the prices and the rental fees, who knows if our groups are going to stay?
Well, if we're not making money, then, again, we'd be better if we kept staying. Right? Again.
Well, I mean, it's nice to have Norton groups able to use our schools, you know.
I agree. But at the same time.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, nothing else in the votes, Mr. Jim, thank you.
Good, just a quick question. So when, when do you have everything for us that we're looking at?
Numbers, uh, number.
Like as far as the food services, the busing?
Right, so May 7th, and then the afternoon before town meeting, final numbers, what we'll have, if anything moves. And then public announcements in terms of who those people actually are and all that will happen on or about June 1st.
Town meeting is the 14th?
Yes.
And we have meeting on the 7th, right?
Correct.
And we'll probably get together before town.
And we usually get somebody together before a town meeting.
Yeah, I think, didn't we set something up already that we are doing that?
I thought we had.
For the food services stuff, because we moved that off.
Right.
So we will know the numbers, May 4th is when all the proposals will come in, so we'll know shortly after that if we save money. But that's another thing, too, we're not going to recoup the health insurance savings, and really the budget only covers 60 to 70,000.
Right.
It's really the health insurance piece. If we're not going to recoup that, I'm going to need an explanation why, when I say that.
Yeah.
I don't need to know why that's not coming to us.
Because the argument will be made, if I can think, and I do not want to speak for any single individual, the argument will be made, why increase your expenses with manpower somewhere else? If you know the following year, you're probably going to be cutting again. That's the typical argument that I've always received from, from, you know, whatever your budgets are.
You got an argument there?
The budget would be, if, if you save $100,000 here, because you eliminated these people, where's that $100,000 going? To recoup these salaries here. So therefore, you're just, you're just continuing to keep your salaries line items and your utility as high as it was before. That's their argument. You're taking from one department to save into another department.
No, because we're not the, whatever it is, the 200,000 isn't going to bring back 13 people.
No, but it's going to bring back X number of people.
So there's, there's going to be some equilibrium, right? Some, some homostasis where it's, okay, we're saving, we're laying off whatever it calls, we're saving compensation, seven people instead of 13.8, and we're getting less than 200,000, because we're not actually paying them off. And there's got to be some, there's, there's got to be some.
I don't think this discussion is any different than you're getting 760 because you have 519,000 in school choice. That's what I'm saying. It is what it is.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want to assume that we're not going to get, I don't want to start being angry at people who have not said we're not going to cut it, but that just doesn't, that's not acceptable to me, honestly.
Well, I don't, I, I, I don't.
The fact, the fact that we are generating revenue through school choice has absolutely nothing to do with the fact that we have to lay off 13.8 people.
Correct.
You can, you can say, hey, you, you're generating revenue through school choice, yeah, and you're welcome. We stopped laying off 13.8 people, I'm not sure how you then say, well, we're not going to give you the money back for those people. It doesn't make any sense.
It's the same argument that people would say, why don't you just eliminate full-day kindergarten and go back to tuition, because that'll save jobs? No, it won't.
Those aren't, those aren't arguments.
But those are, but that's what you hear. Those, those are the, that's the lack of getting it, if you will, about what these numbers mean and don't mean. They don't, at the end of the day.
That's a kid may say, why don't we stop snowmobbing? Like, when it snows, just, to hell with it, just leave it.
In gen, in general, in general.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can save those things, but they're not arguments.
In general, the population around us, foe and fan, does not believe that on July 1st, 13.8 positions won't be here. It's that simple. And, and that, and that's foe and fan. And by fan, I mean our own people who think we're wonderful, who don't, who don't believe it, and those that are incredibly scared and wondering where they're going to be. We have plenty of those folks. And then foe who doesn't believe it. When they see it, they'll say, oh, oh, they did, they did do it. Doesn't mean they're going to change their mind and all of a sudden say, here's your 130,000. That's not going to help.
It still doesn't matter.
That's not going to help.
I think we all know, unless it affects you personally, it doesn't matter. Unless it's your second grade teacher, you know, that you've been dying for your child to have for, you know, all these years, it, it's just not going to matter that people are never going to lose their jobs. That's, I think that's the struck reality of Norton.
Yeah.
I think we've seen it happen before. I think we could all go back historically and say, at one point, JCS had, I forget, we had done the numbers one year, and from when sort of my son started in kindergarten when sort of my son started in kindergarten, till when my sort of daughter was in kindergarten, there was at least 20 less staff people overall. You know, people just, unless it affects you personally, I'm not sure people get it.
And people say they wanna feel the pain, but I'm not quite sure how much pain they wanna feel. With all the fees we have, I mean, how much more pain would Norton like? I, I don't know, I don't have the answer to that, but I guess we're gonna find out.
Well, I, I think there's two parts to that, and I appreciate you saying that, that I think we have to, we have to always be, as we said last year, if, if, if the populace isn't crazy about increasing their taxes, which they weren't, we then made a decision that within the budget, there was X number of dollars for a program like full-day kindergarten, which if you, if you remind me, in, in October, we had somebody questioned me on, how come, you know, we, we had that, we made a decision, and it was a very clear decision, if the town won't solve this issue for us, we're gonna have to try us, make the economic development plan for the future, and that's what we did. And that'll be slapped on us every single day from now until the, you know, the, the end of eternity.
And just to reiterate on that, because it just keeps continuing to be said, we didn't find the money for full-day kindergarten, we earned it through school choice.
And we budgeted, in the presented, voted budget by town meeting, 175,000 of it, it was in the operating budget.
So it wasn't found?
And, and it was then voted to not add the remaining amount by the voters, and so the school committee took 150,000 of its school choice and put it in there, because that money was being earmarked for curriculum instruction and not for that. So, it, it's, it's, like, you know, Carolyn, you, you always bring it back to the SCL, until it hits, hits home, it just, as you know, a great politician once said, it just don't matter.
It doesn't? Can I ask, I don't know if this is appropriate, but just so I have clarification to think about, you sort of keep talking about asking us to consider using school choice money. So let's just say, for example, we use school choice money to keep a teaching position, what happens if, if that money goes away? So how do you keep, how do you keep a position? So I'm just trying to make sure I understand, so?
You're, you're understanding it exactly correctly.
So, but it's?
It's like using free cash.
So potentially, what we're doing, I wanna just make sure I understand, we're potentially saying, well, we have this money in school choice this year, and we'll give it to you, and we'll just keep our fingers crossed that maybe next year it'll be there. Is that how it works?
Yeah, so, so we?
You're using your tax return to pay your mortgage.
Right, exactly.
Taxes go up next year, you can't pay your mortgage.
Yeah, the, the issue for us is that our revenue source for the purposes of school choice for next year is known to us right now, right? And, and based upon the X number of students that are coming. And, and we know it could, it could be more, it could be less, depending on what happens with enrollment, I mean, I can't control that all of a sudden 10 kids leave July 1st, those school choice kids. In the same way that I can't control right now, because we, we're open until September 1st, that 10 kids come in, what we can only control beyond that is, what do the numbers look like October 1st of next year? And if those numbers start to scale back, then you have to, you, you, there, you don't wanna run your personnel account year after year, year after year after year on school choice money. You typically have things like, let's hire three technology integration specialists, because you're doing one-to-one. You know what, we'll take a chance that that type of position above and beyond the classroom that's going to enhance the district is the money that you could potentially say, and I know that's not the fan of everybody at the table, but those are scenarios that I see happening in a lot of cases. One-time purchases absolutely should always be done in that way, and that's not the constant materials, the supplies line item, that's the reading series, math series, and all, and all that type of stuff.
Promotes.
Promotes, exactly.
Okay, Anthony, nothing else?
Nope, thank you.
Uh, next is some personnel announcements.
Just three, three of our folks, paraprofessionals, 21 years of service effective May 5th, Andrea Bonda at the high school, 20 years of service to the district on May 18th, Joanne Blaze, and 30 years of service as of September 7th, Elaine Adagna at the high school. So Elaine will be back with us in the fall and then retires, thank, thank you to her, to all three of them, I should say, for their years of service of, if my math is right, 71 years of service to the district that these three ladies have provided us.
And I know Mrs. Bonda very well, because she used to be, she is mine, she used to be my pain, starting in fifth grade, and she has school dress, she's a sweetheart, and so is Mrs. Adanya.
Well, I can tell you that that's probably the best thing that could be said, this comes from the student who had that paraprofessional, thank you, Peter.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
So congratulations to them, and I wish them many, many years of good health and family.
All right, any other business?
Just a FinCom Wednesday night, on the articles for town meeting, and, at 7, and building committee is the first, at 7, at town hall as well, that's just a presentation. On the 7th, you will also receive and getting your building, excuse me, the project scope for the window project, and town meeting is the 14th.
Um, is this something that we have to discuss next meeting?
I don't know, I didn't see it, didn't come to me.
Uh, this is the delegations and the?
Yeah, we can put that, if you remind me, I can, I'll actually do it right now. Is that for the delegate assembly?
Yes.
Do we have to do it for this time already?
It's in my packet.
Well, if you take a look at it, just tell me if we needed to add it, I think it's early to add it to the, to the agenda.